We will call this meeting to order. The emergency provision notice in accordance with Texas Government Code Section 551.045, this is an emergency meeting of the City Council declaring it an emergency urgent public necessity for the purpose of considering the following emergency agenda items. I would like to start off today by making a few comments, if I may. We are meeting today to ask for our City Council to make some tough decisions as it relates to the health and safety of our community. I am asking for their support and the community's support. Without everyone taking personal responsibility and using a sense of integrity, we will forever change the face of our community. I am asking for your comments, but also your support in making this disaster declaration so that we can be prepared and so that there is no need for panic. Texans and San Angelans have always come together and have always united. This pandemic will not change our character or who we are as a community. Today, we are asking that collectively, as a community, that we come together and we, as leaders of our community, met today at 10:00 a.m. to discuss how we, the city, and the city partners will work together to ensure citizens' safety and health. We are asking that virtually, we are going to put our hands, our arms, together and circle this community to show Conchel Valley our united support. This next few weeks will test our strength, but how we react will impact our ability to react and to protect the health and safety of our citizens. I am asking all citizens to join this fight together because together, we can make a difference. Together, we can protect the health and safety of our citizens. This is not a time that we should be pointing fingers. This is not a time that we should be blaming anyone. This is a time that leaders of every organization should be uniting and developing a plan. We realize this situation will, in fact, impact financially many people and many organizations, as well as the city and the county. We are asking for acts of kindness, personal responsibility, social responsibility, integrity, and most of all, honesty. And with that, I would like to say that the Governor of the State of Texas issued a declaration today at 12:00 p.m., and I would like to offer his comments and a recap, and they are as following. Order number one, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, every person in Texas shall avoid social gatherings in groups of more than 10 people. Two, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, people shall avoid eating or drinking at bars, restaurants, and food courts, or visiting gyms or massage parlors, provided, however, that the use of drive-through, pickup, or delivery options is allowed and highly encouraged throughout the limited duration of this executive order. Number three, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, people shall not visit nursing homes or retirement or long-term care facilities unless to provide critical assistance. And number four, in accordance with the guidelines from the President and the CDC, schools shall temporarily close. That does not mean we will not find a way to continue to educate our children. With that, he also said that these things will go into effect March 20th at 11:59 p.m. And so, as we talk about what we, the city, want to do, I would ask that we also join in his timeline, so it gives people time to prepare. So with that, we would hope that we would also go by Friday night, 11:59 p.m., as we decide what declaration we are going to do today. With that, are there any other public comments? And public comments should be as follows. State your name and address or SMD or your area of responsibility. Each citizen can speak just once per item unless asked to comment by council. Public comment should be three minutes unless extended by council and proponent or opponent five minutes unless extended by council. Council has no obligation to respond to comments or questions from the public. Any response from a member of the City Council to non-agenda comments is limited to: one, a statement of specific factual information; two, reciting of existing policy; and three, directing staff to place this subject on a future agenda. With that, is there any public comment at this point? Steve Floyd, Judge Steve Floyd, would you please come forward?
Tom Green County, in my capacity as the county judge, will be executing an order after the conclusion of this meeting. We're totally in support of the efforts of the mayor and also of the governor of the State of Texas. We've been united on this from the start. This is a worldwide pandemic that makes it sound like something that's not personable. This thing is very, very real to every individual citizen that we have, and it has an individual responsibility. So, I welcome joining you and united and also with State of Texas. Let's get this thing taken care of in the next few weeks and get on about our road. I was only awaiting the effective date, and I'm happy to see that you're aligning, considering aligning with the governor's proclamation. I just think that provides a much simpler unified message. My declaration looks different than the city's because it's some additional authorities that the city has under the Health and Safety Code, but it's basically mirrors yours in the Chapter 418 portion of it. So, wholeheartedly support it. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Judge. Further public comment? With none, we will move into the emergency agenda, which is to consider declaring an extension of the declaration of a local disaster. Teresa, will you be presenting this?
I certainly can, Mayor. What this declaration does is it essentially takes what we did on Monday and extends that in accordance with the guidance by the governor, but also amends the requirements in the following ways. This does prohibit, as you said, any community gatherings, which is 10 people or more at the same time in a single room or single confined space. That includes outdoor community gatherings, so that is an outdoor gathering enclosed by a fence, physical barrier, or other structure, and where people are present and within arm's length. They do not prohibit more than 10 people being in any business, with the exception of restaurants or bars. Restaurants and bars are not allowed to have indoor seating, but they can still have takeout or carryout services. There are some exceptions. That includes critical infrastructure, which is airports and transit, government buildings providing essential services, schools or institutions of higher learning, grocery stores, building supply stores and pharmacies, hospitals, medical offices and facilities, and businesses that sell items necessary for home or auto repair.
We want to make sure, and I'm going to ask council if you have a comment or want to speak, please raise your hand so that we have a sense of order here and make sure that this meeting is held as professionally as we possibly can. So, yes?
I would like to also add that under the health powers that the judge mentioned, we are restricting all visitors from health facilities, and that includes long-term care facilities and nursing homes in order to protect those vulnerable populations, as well as requiring anybody who enters into that facility to have their temperature taken and anyone who has 100.4 or higher to be excluded from those facilities.
Okay, I'm going to start with Tommy Hebert. Do you have questions for Teresa, if you would start, please?
Well, I've got some other questions. These not necessarily for Teresa, I don't think. I'm curious, Mayor, how many tests have been administered in Tom Green County for the potential of someone having the virus?
I will say that we have had five negative results from tests that have been taken. As of about this morning, I think there were 47 tests that have, or people that have been suspected that they might have.
Mayor, that was yesterday at noon. I think there's updated information.
Okay, Sandra, would you like to come forward and give the most up-to-date information that you have?
Sandra Villarreal, I'm the Health Services Director. As of about 9:00 this morning, we had like 55 or 60 tests and about 40...
Sandra, I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
How many?
So, we have had about 55 tests as of this morning. They keep coming in, so as of 8:00 or 9:00 this morning, that's all I had.
It will continue to change.
Exactly. And there was 10 results only, so we have like 45 pending results that we don't know if it will come back positive.
Those 10 results were negative.
Yes. Yes, exactly.
So, how long does it take?
Harry, would you like to ask a question?
Thank you. How long does it take to get back, get these results back from these extended labs that we've gotten now?
The commercial labs are actually taking a little bit longer. Obviously, you have shipping, processing, but they're taking, on average, seven days.
We had a conversation with Drew Darby this morning about that. He is looking into it. So, we have, there are people looking into that, but obviously, there's an overload right now and perhaps not the ability to staff up as needed because this has happened virtually overnight or over two weeks, but Drew Darby is aware of it, and the Department of Health Services is also aware of it. There are many people who are aware of the situation. We don't have, at this point, a number that will change that, but that is one of the issues right now.
The state lab, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
The state lab will, we have gotten results quicker from the state lab, but we've actually taken a sample, like overnighted it, and they've actually had been able to put it on that day's run. But that's only been four that we have sent that way. The others are going commercially, so.
Lucy?
Yes, Sandra, I was going to ask, now, where do, where do these people go with? Like, do they go to their doctor or are they coming to their...
They have to go to a medical provider. The medical provider is the only one that can actually order a test. So, they have to be assessed by the provider as well. Have they had any kind of travel history? Have they been close to someone? Have they been in an area where there has been widespread cruise ships? They are Level 3, so anybody in a cruise ship is more susceptible. So, but the medical provider has to make that assessment, and they're the ones that are going to order that test. And whether, some people may not be sick enough to actually require a test. They may just be going home and just to monitor themselves, and if they get any worse, then they can call back the medical provider. But they will also probably be assessed for influenza. I mean, we're still in flu season and maybe strep and some of the respiratory ailments.
And Billy, you had a question or comment, and then Lane, I'll get to you. Yes, Billy?
I had a question for clarification. Sandra, when you said it's taken about seven days, the 10 people that you cited whose tests have come back negative, they were tested seven or more days ago?
Or were done at the state lab, so we were able to do them, collect them on one day, and they were tested the next day.
But how long ago was that?
That was, the first one was last Sunday, and then this past Sunday, we sent three more. So, they were able to get on that Monday run from the state. The state can only also, the state meaning Lubbock. Lubbock is our laboratory response network, and so that's the one that's going to do state testing for us locally. And so, yeah, if we send them that way, that's how long it's going to take. But the state can only do between 10 and 25 per day, so it depends on, do we get in or not.
And so, there is no charge for the test?
The state, there's no charge for the state. I'm not exactly sure about commercial labs. I'm not sure if those are, I can't speak for that. Maybe Shane or someone, but they might be able to be billed through an insurance, possibly. But I'm not exactly sure if everyone's going to be provided a free, a frequent or not, depending on, I think, what the president has said.
Thank you.
Lane?
That was my question of the cost. That was maybe associated, that would maybe be a preventative item for someone wanting to go in and get tested who might think they have it. If they see a charge and say, "I can't afford it," can I...
Right, and right now, I mean, it's still limited still.
A reminder of you coming into the audience, you must be six feet apart from the next person. You may not sit next to them. Okay, Lane, thank you. Tommy?
This is a general question. We're following, the CDC said, you know, 15 days, yet we're, we're just on the beginning stage of our testing and results and so forth. It's not a question of if, it's a question of when we have a positive case here. My question is, again, in the bigger picture, why are we just doing two weeks? Is it simply because that's what the CDC says? We're going to be, we're going to be back here again in two weeks having this same conversation, so why are we just talking two weeks? And I'm looking at the audience, I see some professionals in the audience. I'm wondering, again, why we're only doing this for two weeks?
We're doing it for two weeks, I think, so people can plan efficiently for two weeks, and we hope that within that time period, if everyone follows the guidelines that are given, that we will find that the numbers start going down. Because what we found, or what has been found in other countries such as China, once they shut everything down, the cases started going down. It does not mean, and of course, we will respond to extending it if necessary, and the schools are prepared and everyone else is too at that. If it continues to look like we need to call another meeting in seven days instead of waiting for two weeks, we can adjust as we need to.
It's really just a matter of trying to lower that curve. Right now, it's just going so high so quickly that we're about to collapse the healthcare system, and that's what we're really trying to protect. I mean, worldwide shortages of personal protective equipment. We've got to lower that number and that quick rise, so if we can do these mitigation things right now and try those, and because they are effective, try to lower that number so maybe that the healthcare system can actually take that pressure. Because right now, it's just, it's starting to cripple, and we don't want it to fully collapse.
You can continue, Sandra. You want to tell people about taking their temperature on a regular basis before they overwhelm the emergency room or the doctor's office?
Oh, sure, I mean, there's, yeah, sure, there's things we can do every single day. Yeah, monitor ourselves, take temperatures if you want to twice a day. You want to make sure that it doesn't go over 100. And of course, your dry cough, you know, those symptoms that, you know, we've been talking about, the coughing and the shortness of breath and, yeah, your fever. And so, those are the three main signs and symptoms that they're looking for. There could be others, but those are like the main ones. So, yeah, anybody can do that at home. And if you start feeling sick, stay home still. Stay home. If you start getting worse and you just feel like you just cannot handle it and you've gotten so bad, or getting worse than better, then go ahead and call. Call ahead to your medical provider and tell them what's going on, and then, you know, call you in and make arrangements for you to come in in some form or fashion.
Okay. Further questions for Sandra? We want to make sure that people are clear about what this emergency declaration does and to make sure people don't also necessarily overreact. So, Teresa, on things like a regular office of several people, as long as they're practicing social distancing and using the correct washing your hands frequently, hand sanitizers, cleaning the surfaces frequently, people may still conduct business. We are not shutting down business, and that needs to be very clear about what we're doing going forward. Businesses that can function, with the exception of restaurants and bars, for 10 and under people, still shall continue. Is that correct?
That's correct. We're only limiting any business that has more than 10 people in the same room at the same time.
Okay. Yes, Harry?
For clarification, because I do have a couple of people that have asked, does that mean your childcare facilities are going to continue to operate as long as they have 10 or less in a particular room?
Yes, that is what the direction we've been giving them. As long as they keep to the numbers within each specific room, they are allowed to continue to operate. I do know that childcare facilities right now are on heightened alert and have extra procedures that they're following. I don't think they're allowing anybody in except the kids, and you have to have your temperature taken before you go in. So, they already have some pretty strict things, but we are further reducing that to 10 people in a room.
Okay. Tommy?
Mayor, I want to read into the record. To me, one of the wisest people we have right now that is a part of this process is Dr. Anthony Fauci, the National Institute of Health person. And he said over the weekend, I will say it over and over again, when you're dealing with an emerging infectious diseases outbreak, you are always behind where you think you are if you think that today reflects where you really are. So, we ought to all take notice of that statement. If we think it's where we are today, Dr. Fauci says, "No, that's not where you are today." So, I am hopeful we will be ever vigilant on this to make sure that we're doing all we can. We're talking about protecting people's lives, so I hope we take this that seriously, that this is not something to be trifled with.
With that said, we also want to make sure that we are understanding the humanity and people's lives because there will be extra stress on people's lives.
Absolutely.
Businesses who are struggling or on a small amount of cash flow are going to hurt, and we need to know that our community, the Texas community, the county community, the nation is made up of a lot of small businesses, and this will be a crippling effect, and we all know that and we understand that. So, we need to make sure we have patience with people and understanding of people's situations. A lot of families are going to be stressed for all kinds of reasons, and we want to make sure that they understand the resources that are out there, the small business loans that they can apply for. There are a series of things, and you may contact Dave Erickson at the Business Resource Center. He will be glad to guide and help people with understanding what's out there, what's been approved, where they can go for some of those resources. Michael Looney at the Chamber, 655-4... Okay, I usually can quote this off the top, but, you know, I'm struggling today, so it's 655-4136? That's it. Michael Looney will be tickled to death to help advise and consult.
Give him, yeah, give him his cell phone.
Thank you, Michael, for being here. I know he's received many phone calls already. People are laying off people. You know, because at the same point in time that we have this virus, we also know that Saudi Arabia, being jealous of what we've been able to do over the past few years in our oil and gas industry, has made a decision to flood the market with oil and gas. And so, that has had a huge negative impact on the oil and gas industry, so you add that to the issues that we're struggling with and the virus, and it will have a large impact on this community. There are cities that have created curfews. We are not, in our emergency declaration, saying anything about a curfew. That being said, everyone needs to be aware, if there's situations and issues out there that are problematic, you must call Chief Carter and he will address it, but we are not putting a curfew out there. If anyone feels threatened, city council members, city staff members, or community members, if you feel threatened by anyone concerning these, the decisions that are being made today and by Governor Abbott, please contact Chief Carter. We want to know, and we want to know that everyone feels safe in this community and that you have someone there to help protect you. This is about, again, a community coming together and pulling all of our resources together so that we stay strong and, most importantly, stay healthy. Yes, Billy?
I have gotten several calls, people inquiring if, based on the declaration that we, you know, agree on here today, if there is a violation or they notice a violation, do we have a hotline? Who would they call?
Chief Carter, if you want to come in and answer that question, I know that there's some concerns of several businesses, particularly last night. We're definitely beyond a 50-person, and many council members have received phone calls considering those businesses, so how do they handle that?
Good afternoon, Chief Carter. Just called the non-emergency line, just like any other call.
And we would hope that people use social media to also stop some of this because we know that people are using social media in many ways to make fun of, point fingers at, make a joke, and make announcements about their business using social media that does not support what we're trying to accomplish. So, if you're on social media, make sure your reply to them is, "You need to shut that down." We can be responsible for shutting some of that down if we will, down if we will act appropriately.
Thank you, Chief.
Okay.
Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
I have a couple of other questions.
Yes, please, continue.
But I didn't know if Tommy was done. He said he had several questions, so I didn't...
No, I'll...
I'll come back to you then.
Go ahead.
Continue.
All right. And my questions are for Teresa. Teresa, when you were reading the information you have there, you specifically mentioned churches and airports. Could you say specifically so that all the citizens that are listening to this, say specifically what will, what should occur with churches and what should occur with the airport, please?
Churches are considered in the general category of community gatherings, so they need to limit the number of people in a space to 10. So, if you have a church facility that has multiple spaces in it, like my church has multiple little rooms, you can put 10 persons in each room, and that's okay under the provisions. But if there are more than 10 people in one space, that's a violation. That includes outdoor services if there's something that contains them, so if it's inside of a wall or a gate. Airports are considered that critical infrastructure, and that definition comes from the Department of Homeland Security, and as such, the president and his requests to us indicated that those places be left to operate. However, we are still asking them to make sure that there's some social distancing measures. We are requiring for anybody, you know, if you're a business that doesn't have 50 people at one time, but people come and go over time, there is a requirement that you do use hand sanitizer or have soap and water available for people, that you have some sort of rules regarding social distancing in all of those areas, and that you increase the cleaning of surfaces where, you know, people tend to touch. Thank you. You're welcome.
Do you have another question, Billy? Or if that is...
That's it for right now.
All right, Tommy?
I would like to clarify one thing.
Sure.
Even though this doesn't go into effect until tomorrow at 11:59 or whenever the declaration from the governor goes into effect, we do still have the declaration we made on Monday in effect. So, it's not, "Go out and have a big party tonight because tomorrow you can't." You were still limited to 50 people as of Monday. All of those provisions that we are including today for health facilities, healthcare facilities, those all went into effect on Monday. So, the restriction of visitors from peoples, from those facilities, as well as taking temperatures of everybody, including staff who enters those facilities, those are the directions of our local health authority.
Because we've been talking about schools, Brian, Dr. May, would you like to come forward and just talk about ASU, and so all the media that's here will already know the stance you've taken and what you've done?
Well, I'll just kind of give you a brief update. We obviously started about two weeks ago and announced that we would go completely online till the end of the semester. We have postponed graduation. We will confer the degrees and mail out diplomas in May. We will allow the students to walk in August. We have gone to only a very minor group of folks that work at ASU. We're down to about, we have 90% now off-campus of our employees, and so we have a number of them working at home, but some of them are, for pandemic reasons, are just going to stay at home. And then, we have encouraged the students not to come back to Angelo State, but if they did and they so choose to come back, we are housing them on campus, and we do provide food service to them and library uses, as well as Wi-Fi to complete their studies online. But all of our courses have been converted to online delivery.
Okay, thank you. Carl Duttloff, would you also like to come forward and discuss your position?
Sure, yes. And first, I want to thank the city and the mayor for hosting our very informative meeting this morning with city officials and elected leaders. I think that's what keeps San Angelo strong, so thank you for that opportunity. Starting March 3rd, in preparation for this event and situation, our curriculum instruction office and leadership team has developed a home-based learning platform. So, we are more than prepared to go through the end of May and the end of school year. That platform was released today to principals, teachers, and it will start on Monday. So, we are completely ready to go to a home-based virtual learning platform. Just today, I learned that, of course, we sent a survey to all families, 15,000 families in SAISD, regarding what type of internet access or tablets or devices do they have at their home. Based on that survey, Monday, we are having, and I'm understanding that it may be even operational tomorrow, we will start a drive-through pickup of devices for our students. So, we'll start that with secondary first, where we are redistributing many Chromebooks, smart tablets, and in our inventory, and we will have a drive-through pickup for delivery to all of our secondary students. Right now, currently, our elementary is still on a platform of really text, paper, and also many of the online platforms that they currently use. One nice thing, in partnership with one of our educational resources that we currently use, we are providing text and backpacks, separate individual literacy text and books for kids in backpacks. So, we'll be doing that for the elementary level also. As you know, we've mobilized our feeding sites. We have five current sites and have fed over 700 students in the last three days. We may expand that initiative as well. Following this meeting, our plan is to move to a virtual-based learning environment... Following this meeting, our plan is to move to a virtual-based learning environment through April 10th. So through Friday, April 10th, SAI SD plans to move to that virtual-based learning environment. And again, we are fully prepared and actually released that information today to staff and teachers. Also, we have committed, knowing that three-week lead, we are committed to a week in advance to give our many families, who we have certainly understand and thinking about and praying for the hardships that they will endure during this with childcare and other, you know, serious situations. So knowing that, we want to be able to mobilize if our city, our county, and our governor and president provides us that opportunity to do that. So right now, the closure and the move to virtual-based learning at home will go through April 10th.
Thank you. Shane Plamel, would you like to come forward and offer some words, please?
Just kind of give you an update of kind of what Shannon's doing. Primarily, we initially focused just basically on safety, safety of our visitors, our patients, our visitors, our staff, our doctors. We quickly moved to using our telemedicine platform to do what I would call COVID-19 screenings. We didn't want the dollar amount to be an impact to those screenings, so we offered a free coupon code. That's gone over pretty well. I will say the telemedicine structure throughout the United States kind of has really gone, is getting stressed now, so there's some long wait times. But we do offer through Shannon On Demand, basically, the opportunity for anybody within the Contra Valley, within this, basically, the 24 or 25 counties that we serve, to go online through Shannon On Demand and get a free COVID-19 screening. We've really been focused on making sure our staff are at work. So we have worked with the Y in terms of providing daycare for our caregivers. That's gone really well, and I really appreciate the YMCA. And we have a secondary plan for another daycare site with one of the local churches. So everybody's been a great partner on that. We've been really focused on communication, communication with our, basically, our leaders, our staff, our doctors. And we're doing that daily. We're doing it through multiple forms. We're doing it through an audio call, audio message. We're doing it through short videos. We are using email and those type of platforms. That's gone really well. Just today, we're offering basically 8 to 5. I might get the time a little wrong, but pretty much 8 to 5, a Shannon number for people who have questions about COVID-19, about the screening and testing for them to call. We have a clinician on the other side to help them with any of their questions. We started that today. We also started to set up a, it's real important when it comes to this particular virus that we really wanted to do the screenings and testing away from the hospital and the clinics to protect our patients and staff and visitors. So today, we just set up a testing facility kind of downtown. And we're doing this testing there right now, today and tomorrow. And we're planning on Monday to offer screenings and testing. Again, I think they mentioned that to even have a screen, you have to have a physician order. But we're going to staff that with probably advanced practice professionals and then basically do screenings if people need screenings. And a lot of times when people have the screenings, they don't need the test. So if we feel they need to test, then we'll do the test there. And they'll be able to be away from the hospital and the clinics and be more likely in their vehicles. Depending on how that goes, this is kind of new for us too. So depending on how that goes, we're looking at a secondary site. I'm actually going to ask Dr. May for his help on that, but a little bit after this meeting. But like a secondary site if we have to, and I suspect we will. The big concerns that we have are basically the turnaround time on tests. It's a little bit out of our control. You know, that's a little frustrating to us. But I mean, it's kind of, it's where we're at and we're just dealing with it. We've been, we are really pretty in good, compared to a lot of healthcare systems around the United States, we're really in good shape with when it comes to protective equipment. We can go quite a while, luckily. So we're in pretty good shape there, but we are daily trying to find more just in case this gets prolonged out. What we're turning our attention to now is if this goes prolonged and if it gets a little bit more severe, and I suspect it could happen. So we want to hope for the best, but plan for the worst. So we are just looking at what it looks like a week, two weeks, three weeks, 30 days, 60 days, and making sure that we have the resources and that we can do our best in terms of taking care of our community.
Do we have questions for Shane Harry? Start with you.
I'd just like to make a comment. Thank you, Mayor. I met with my cardiologist yesterday by phone, which I thought was a little unique. But we went through everything that she was going to ask me face-to-face, and we did it by phone and it worked out great.
Yep. And the physicians and the staff have been great. They're trying to come up with innovative solutions and try to, we can do a lot of things over the phone and we can do a lot of things virtually. And we're looking at those types of avenues to take care of our patients.
Thank you, Billy.
Yes. Shane, I pray and hope that we don't have anyone that would test positive in San Angelo. But I was encouraged to hear you say, because I got a call from someone who stated they were a healthcare professional and didn't feel as though we had enough protective equipment to deal with the situation should we in fact start to develop positive cases. So what I understood you to say is you feel that we're in good shape. You're still looking for more, but we're in good shape as far as protective equipment for our healthcare providers.
Yes, ma'am. We are, I feel like we're in good shape today and in the short term. We are, though, I am, every day, we spend time looking for more supplies. And we're looking at things that we can do differently at Shannon to conserve our supplies too. So we've changed some policies and how we do certain things. So I feel, I would say, I feel a lot better about our situation than I feel, and I feel badly about some of the other healthcare providers around the country. Because I think there is some areas that they're in desperate need of PP&amp;E. And we have a pretty good supply, but I'm focused on taking care of this 24, 25 counties that we serve.
Go ahead, Billy.
This may be a bit premature, but of course, you know, most of us are glued to the TV for developing situations. And one of the things that I heard reported from one of the overseas country is that they're setting up separate facilities for people that test positive and are being cared from, a separate facility from their regular patients that have other issues that are not tied to COVID-19. Are we considering anything like that or is that too premature for this point?
No, I don't think it's premature. We are thinking about, thinking ahead to see if that happens. Because I see two, kind of two distinct groups. I see one group being someone that we're testing and we don't know for sure, and then those that are positive. And so we're approaching it, looking at those two groups and how we best care for them and keep them separated. So we are, though we have no positive cases here in San Angelo or in the Contra Valley, which is a great blessing so far, we are trying to think ahead to how we will care for the people in this community when it happens. So, in fact, every day at noon, I spend my lunch with 11 great doctors, and from surgeons to primary care. And this is stuff that we're talking about. How do we take care if this happens? If we go like a tier three, a tier four, a tier five? We're trying to plan ahead, but it's, we're like you. We're kind of learning every day.
There's no guidebook, is there?
There is not. And we just kind of keep on moving forward and then kind of refine everything we do each and every day. Trying to not let perfection stand in the way of progress too, so.
Daniel, did you want to ask questions or make comments?
I'd just like to make a comment. I don't have a question for Shane at this moment, but thank you. I don't know if you all have any more comments for Shane before I say anything? Mayor, all I want to say, because we have received phone calls and some of the questions that we receive pertain to essential services. A lot of concern about, will we have water? Will we have electricity? Will we have? I can assure you right now that that's not, shouldn't be an area of concern for our citizens. You will have water, of course, absolutely. Our essential services, PD, fire, EMS, will all be out there as well. That will continue again. So those of you that are concerned, you don't need to concern yourself about that. Also, the question that Tommy asked a while ago, why two weeks? I think at this point, what we'd love to be able to see is compliance, strict compliance to the guidelines of this declaration. The quicker that we do that, the quicker that we can return to normal. And that's what we'd love to see happen. So again, just comply with these guidelines and let's get back to normal. Hopefully, within the next two weeks, we'll see some really great results of actually this compliance. So we're really shooting for that. Also, one thing that concerns me is going into a grocery store. I'm telling you right now, we don't have a shortage issue at the grocery stores. It's a stocking issue. People are going out there and shopping and hoarding a lot of different things that you don't need to be doing. If we were to return to just our normal buying habits, the way we normally go about purchasing our groceries, we would be okay. Everything would be back to normal. So again, be mindful, especially with the elderly people that need their supplies and they're struggling right now to get that. Think about them, please. But again, just a call to return to your normal buying habits and you'll see that the shelves will be restocked fairly quickly as well. So anyway, those were my comments.
Great. I wanted to invite Colonel Nas to come forward and talk about Goodfellow Air Force Base if we could.
Madam Mayor, City Council, community leaders, what times we live. But there's no greater honor to get the opportunity to lead during crisis. And we're doing a good job at that. So thank you for letting me be part of that. And just to give you a quick update on Goodfellow and to establish just a general baseline. Our National Command Authority, as well as our DOD senior leaders, have deemed the mission that we conduct at Goodfellow Air Force Base as a mission, essential mission for the nation. What that means is, in terms of our training of our ISR professionals and IFR department, IFR airmen, we must continue doing that mission. The reason why the National Command Authority has decided that this is a mission, essential mission, is we are still engaged in combat around the world and we still have to replenish forces, operational forces. We developed those airmen here at Goodfellow Air Force Base, so the pipeline, what we call the pipeline, must continue. Now, that doesn't mean that Goodfellow is fully open for business across the board. I will share with you that we have declared HBConBravo for Goodfellow Air Force Base. Essentially, what that means is exactly what Mr. Valenzuela just explained. It is a cohesive understanding within the installation that we must do exactly what was described by the governor and by the mayor earlier today. But most importantly, that we, as leadership of Goodfellow Air Force Base, we are looking and watching for behavior change, which is what you alluded to. But most importantly, behavior change enforcement. When they're not adherent to it, we are enforcing the rules. So we've also modified some services around the base. I ordered three days ago to restrict our students to Goodfellow Air Force Base. It was my responsibility to the city not to have 3,000 extra people walking around the city. So I've, within the confines of having to continue the mission, I have done everything that I can to help the city and the community to battle this together. I will share this with you. Uncertain times, we know that. We know that. These are uncertain times. But it is how we choose to lead during those certain times that we will be judged. I think when the book is written and they write about what you're doing in San Angelo, what you're doing in the county, judge, I think it will be nothing but positive. So pray for us. We'll do the same for you and I'll keep you abreast if anything changes at Goodfellow. I welcome any questions, by the way.
Any questions for Colonel Nas? Thank you very much. I also want to compliment many of our city staff and our city attorney Teresa because we were the first city in this West Texas area to do the declaration. We're way ahead of our other West Texas communities. And through her guidance and her recommendation and her leadership, we were able to react and declare our proclamation on Monday. And that was four and five days ahead of most other cities out here. And so we have to say thank you for her leadership because she's the one, as I was panicking, if you will. No, I didn't panic, but I was concerned, yes, about what we were about to do. And of course, that requires tremendous amount of strength and belief in the recommendations. And I thank you for providing that because I needed that to help make the tough decision on Monday. So thank you for that. All right, do we have further comments or questions at this point in time? If we, Michael Looney, would you like to come forward?
Thank you, Mayor, City Council. Nas is exactly right. It's an honor for us to be in this position. And I know that sounds really odd, but we are called to lead and to serve. And the Chamber of Commerce, the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce, is doing just that. If you go to sanangelo.org, it doesn't matter if you're a member or not, go to sanangelo.org, that's our website. You will see a very new, newly deployed COVID-19 Business Resource Hub. And what this is, this is an evolving, living document that is a collaborative effort between the Small Business Development Center, that's the ASU Small Business Development Center, the San Angelo Chamber of Commerce, COSIDC, which is the City of San Angelo Development Corporation, and Contra Valley Workforce Solutions, and the county, so Tom Green County as well. This provides resources for businesses that right now are trying to prepare for the impacts of what is happening and may happen regarding workforce layoffs, infusion of capital, modification of loans, these types of very complex things that most businesses don't really think much about until there's a problem. So again, I would encourage, go to sanangelo.org and you will immediately be taken to COVID-19 Business Resource Hub that's just deployed a couple of minutes ago. We've been working on it for about the past week. But this is a collaborative effort between those entities that are touching a lot of the industrial businesses. So retail businesses and other public services are being well-cared-for, but we wanted to make sure that there were also resources, not just for retailers, but also for our industrial base as well. The industrial base of San Angelo is following the same model as the industrial base of the entire North American sector. You've got supply chains that are being interrupted. And there are tools that can be used to help bulwark your company against those impending problems. And some companies may have no problems at all. But again, sanangelo.org, and it can go into a much deeper description of the different types of tools that are available. And I'd also like to answer any questions if there are any at this point. But otherwise, sanangelo.org, COVID-19 resources.
Do we have questions for Michael Looney from anybody? Okay, thank you. We also discussed this morning, and I think it's an important part to just offer everyone here today, is that we know that every organization has a different message in terms of what they're doing, how they will be operating. So we are going to use Brian Groves and our Public Information Office to gather everybody's information together and put out one message that's inclusive of everybody's plan of action so that everyone will know where to go. So on a daily basis, you're not getting some new text message about what one organization is doing versus another. We know that will create tremendous confusion and will continue to create a little sense of insecurity with people. So we will use our Public Information Office to be the source for us getting out the community's plans for addressing what we're going to do to protect the public health and safety of this community. Okay, yes, Tommy or Tom?
Mayor, that was going to be my last question. Thank you for addressing that. So let's not clarify, but let's repeat. So let me, let's not clarify, but let's repeat that any communication to the community is going through the City of San Angelo Public Information Office.
Correct.
Has it been discussed yet? Is there going to be, it doesn't have to be daily necessarily, I wouldn't think, but some systematic update just for the public?
Yes, sir, there will be.
Okay, good.
Absolutely. We'll go out on our Facebook, and there'll be other areas of resources, but yes, it will be done on a regular basis.
Okay, thank you.
Tom?
So, and this one's mainly for Teresa. We're a consumption-based society. We're all changing things, and, you know, from the beef business, we look at supply, and people are going to consume differently now at home. But I think something we need to make sure here is real clear. Restaurants in these businesses are not restricted from operation. They just might go to a takeout type scenario, correct?
That's correct. And, you know, the mayor and I went to the Restaurant Association, I guess it was on Monday or Tuesday.
It was Monday, yes.
And I think everybody agrees that the restaurants are a necessary part of our food supply, and so they are open. They just do not have dining room services. They can do takeout. We have lots of home delivery options. A lot of those have the option just to leave it outside your door and not even interact with the person delivering it. So yes, restaurants can still make food, deliver food, all of those sorts of things.
But if a bar only does liquor, they cannot operate. Is that correct?
Well, I haven't had an opportunity, actually, to read what the governor did.
Yes.
One thing that I heard is that he did suspend the rules on alcohol sales, and that they might be able to do takeout, but I don't know that yet. We can provide that information to Brian once I have an opportunity to see what actually they said. But whatever rules are in effect for the state, we're going to allow that. And actually, the declaration says that. Any interpretation by the governor as to what he has done, that interpretation will also apply to the action that we have taken.
The governor's statement is very specific. I'll read it, and you can tell me if it's very specific or not.
Okay.
Okay. It says, "Avoid in restaurant/bar dining and drinking while still allowing for takeout services."
Yeah, I think that needs a little more clarification.
Yes, I think it's a little rubbery there.
We'll figure it out, though.
I'm not worried about a six-pack. It's like 14 days of ramen noodles I don't want to do.
You do not have to do...I don't want to cook for 14 days.
But also, remember, we have a lot of drive-through restaurants already that are staying in operation. They're just not allowing you in their dining rooms. I'm assuming there are many places should somebody choose to need a bottle of wine, a six-pack of beer, those things are available. So we're not shut, as we said. There are many available services still out there.
Can I give one more recommendation to people? One thing that was discussed in our meeting this morning that is very important, if you're changing processes, and this is especially important to the governmental agencies, but I think everybody, if you're changing any process or having to buy new equipment in order to address the circumstance, please document. Don't send it all to us right now, but make sure you're keeping records of that. We're not clear what kind of resources are going to be available for reimbursement as this goes on, but we know you can't get reimbursement if you don't properly document it. So make sure you're documenting those purchases, that you're, for things you're taking in response to this emergency.
I will also, and Judge Floyd, you might add on this, because I'm afraid I won't repeat it correctly, but as far as the transit system, the bus system, what is the direction they're taking?
John Austin's right there, yes.
I can't see him, sorry. The computer's in the way. Thank you for coming forward.
Yes, ma'am. John Austin Stokes, Contra Valley Council of Governments. At this time, we are operating as normal. We have seen a decline in ridership, but I want to reassure everybody that we are sanitizing those buses three times a day, that we are going to be there for folks that are dependent on that and have no other way to get out of their homes, and we will do that as long as we can, and we will do it in accordance with the guidelines from the CDC.
Okay, great. I'm sure there are other people who I can't see at this moment that might want to speak about their organization and what we're doing. I think if not, I want to also offer that we have had Representative Drew Darby very involved in this process. He has offered a lot of direction. He has been on the phone with us many times every day. He was on the conference call with us today to help give us guidance. Laura Lewis from Senator Perry's office was also on the conference call today to make sure that he's aware of the actions that were taken and what we are doing. But we've had tremendous support from our representatives, and I want to make sure everybody's aware of what they have done in terms of supplying the support and saying to us, whatever you need, we're here to help fight for you. We're here to represent you, and so I think that's important for everybody to know. All right, with that, I think that it must be time to take a vote. And so I'm going to ask for a motion for approval of the emergency declaration for a local disaster.
So moved, ma'am.
So moved by Billy, seconded by Tommy. Any further public comment? With none, we will take a vote. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
With none opposed, we pass at 7-0. And then I will ask for an adjournment, and before I do that, let me say that we have a lot of media here. Brian Groves is going to bring some additional setup here, another microphone, so that the media has an opportunity to ask questions and address any of the things that they feel are important to get out there. So with that said, may I have a motion for adjournment? Yes, Tommy?
Does that then mean we will not meet Monday morning?
We will not meet Monday. This, I ask to move this forward so that we could address it appropriately and quickly.
Good, thank you. I'll make a move. Motion adjourned, Mayor.
Okay. Seconded by Lane. I'm sure there's, everyone's in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes 7-0. At this point, we are adjourned, and of media, if you would like to hang around, ask additional questions, please do so. And any community folks who would like to hang around and ask questions of City Council, or of any of the folks that are our leadership group, please do.
And while everyone's assembling up here, I would like to read for immediate release from the Texas House of Representatives and Drew Darby the following. Representative Drew Darby, Republican San Angelo, issued the following statement regarding recent actions to protect Texans and prevent the spread of the novel coronavirus, COVID-19. Today, Governor Greg Abbott issued executive orders calling for new efforts to minimize exposure to and transmission of COVID-19. I am grateful for the governor's leadership and fully support these steps to keep Texans safer. I especially appreciate the tireless work of our local West Texas leaders, first responders, healthcare professionals, and critical customer service workers for their dedication during this challenging time. I strongly encourage West Texas residents to heed the direction of local officials as they prescribe important measures aimed at protecting citizens and maintaining our healthcare resources. We are strong, and we will get this, through this together. During the press conference, Texas Department of State Health Services Commissioner John Hellerstedt declared a statewide public health disaster, which will give state and local officials additional tools to respond to COVID-19. Governor Abbott issued the following executive orders effective through midnight on April the 3rd, with the possibility of being extended based on the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention recommendations. One, avoid social gatherings of more than 10 people. Two, avoid in restaurant/bar dining and drinking while still allowing for takeout services. Three, people shall not visit nursing homes unless it provide critical assistance. And four, schools shall temporarily close. The executive orders do not affect resources such as grocery stores, pharmacies, gas stations, or other businesses and workplaces of more than 10 people, as long as necessary precautions are maintained to reduce contact and virus transmission. All critical infrastructure will remain operational. And he also lists some additional state resources. So if you need those, please contact Cheryl de Cardova in Drew Darby's office, but they are the Texas Education Agency's Texas Students Meal Finder Map to find where Texas schools are serving meals amid closures. Two, the Texas Workforce Commission, information for employers and job seekers. And three, the Texas Department of State Health Services Updates on the Coronavirus Symptoms Testing and Prevention. And those websites, I'm sure you can find quickly, but also contact Cheryl's office. She has them right here, and she will provide those for you. We will also have this available through our Public Information Office, Brian Groves. All right, with that, I want to continue to provide information to everyone, and I'm going to start with any questions from the audience. If you would please come forward to this microphone, and our community leaders will address your questions, if you would, please. So who would like to go first? Got to have a question. Thank you.
Loaf, we've, obviously, we saw what happened in Abilene yesterday with them canceling school for the remaining portion of the school semester. Does SEISD have any plans to do so if anything does increase, and, you know, what would be attached to that?
We talked numerous times, you know, again, with city and elected officials regarding this, also our Board of Trustees. Our thinking is that, because we are very respectful of the financial hardships that it causes many of our parents, families, staff members, also those hardships that they can't work in critical care jobs, such as in our local health agencies and hospitals. So one of the things that we wanted to do is provide enough of a buffer that perhaps for those that have traveled or were exposed over the spring break to more than encompass that 14-day period, which we know can vary according to your medical source, but more than encompass that 14-day period and extend that to a three-week buffer. So in that three weeks, you know, our intent is still based on evidence. We practice being evidence-informed in our school district, and so based on that, we want to really provide the best opportunity for, to stimulate the economy, to get back in the workforce, and we thought a three-week window might do that for us. However, we are more than prepared, again, with our virtual platform, to do that until the end of the typical school year. So all those things work in concert with each other. And also, while I'm at the microphone, I just want to, I appreciate all the ladies and gentlemen behind me, because I have certainly called or texted them numerous times to get information, guidance, and support as we make this critical decision. So thank you.
Next question, please.
Sorry, I'm sure I have to lower the microphone. Okay, so I have several questions. I was wondering, is San Angelo planning on extending any deadlines for bills to help relief?
Daniel, would you come forward?
One of the last things we want to do is cut off water services, right? So we do understand, and right now there are individuals that are struggling, and we get that as well. We'll tell you right now that, no, we're not cutting off water service. We want to continue that service. One of the first things we tell people is wash your hands for 20 seconds, right? How can you do that if you have no water? So absolutely not. We will not be cutting off water service. We'll be working with you, so that will continue.
I was also wondering, has the, what all is going to be available as resources for people who are struggling during this time?
Well, as far as the resources, and we talked about a few of those, Mayor, a while ago.
Recommend David Erickson, number one.
Sure. I think the ones that'll be struggling, especially where addressing businesses here locally, is going to be our business community. So Dave Erickson with the SBA can be contacted. You can find him at the Business Resource Center. He has a lot of resources that are available to you as well. We talked about Michael Looney there at the Chamber of Commerce with Economic Development. That's another valuable source as well. So those businesses that may have some questions, as far as how to respond to a certain problem that they're having, they can reach out to those two sources, and they will direct them where they need to go.
And what about the, sorry?
The Workforce Solutions Group also is a dynamic organization to help answer a lot of those questions in terms of if you've been laid off, if your hours have been cut, if you've been fired, any of those issues, the Workforce Solutions people will help you understand what you can do and the resources available for you.
All right, that actually answered my next question, so thank you very much.
Next question, please.
For Mayor Gunter, during this time with restaurants and bars, obviously, bars will certainly be impacted, but for restaurants, do you urge them to kind of stay open as much as they can at this time?
I would urge people to follow the direction that has been dictated, and that is, is that dining inside a restaurant is not allowed, only to go, and delivery will be allowed. And that takes effect tomorrow night at midnight. So right now, under the existing declaration of the city, you could continue to dine at restaurants as long as you had 50 people or less at that restaurant, effective tomorrow night at midnight, and dining inside restaurants will be eliminated. I closed my restaurant yesterday, so we're prepared to follow suit and to make sure that we're a leader in following the guidelines that have been given.
I have another question for you, Mayor. You address people taking responsibility for what they post and say on social media. Can you relay that message again for us, please?
I sure will. You know, many people have taken this opportunity to bash city leadership or businesses or individuals, but, you know, the reality is, is that as a community, we are trying to do the best to protect the public and health, safety of our community. And so this isn't a time to punch at people, to make fun of people. We're doing the best that we can. We are trying as hard as we can to make sure that we're taking care of the citizens that are out there. And we know we're asking for tough decisions to be made. We know that we are creating a situation where people's personal finances will be impacted, as well as their business financials will be impacted. We got it. But our first priority, our first obligation, is to the health and safety of this community, and so we are going to make those tough decisions. I believe that we need to be the leaders in that, and we will come out of this if everybody follows the directives as they are given. Social media should not be used today as a negative. Let's support each other, and as I say, take personal responsibility and make sure that we're kind, we're honest, we show integrity, we show intelligence in our decisions, whether they are our personal decisions, our financial decisions, or our shopping decisions.
Thank you so much. And then I had another question for Judge Floyd. Sorry, I'm putting you on the spot. On your disaster declaration, what does that mean for, you know, your everyday people?
Well, primarily, the one that was done today is not totally necessary because of the governor's actions at noon today. But what I did, that disaster declaration, one, to show unity with the community, that we're united in the fighting against this. And the second thing that also puts Tom Green County in the loop to be able to recover any of the emergency funds from FEMA, if and when they ever come. So as much as anything, they're not going to be effective. Of course, the municipal order does not, basically is not effective outside of the city limits. So this makes those conditions out in the county effective, but the governor basically took care of that at noon today. So it's to try to get some of the local taxpayers' monies back that we will probably end up expended in the battle and the defeat, hopefully sooner than later, of this issue.
Perfect. Thank you so much.
While I'm here, one other issue. Obviously, we're delivering essential services, court services, various things. We're having an elected official department heads meeting at the county in the morning and try to develop how that's going to look like. So tomorrow afternoon, there will be some more information released that'll go on our website and through the city, which we appreciate the opportunity to post there, to give a little more guidelines how the citizens can interact with the county services as they're to be delivered.
Thank you so much.
My first question is, so there's a lot of businesses around town that maybe don't have the revenue to stay open past a big shutdown, like rent-wise. They still, you know, have a lot of rents and bills to pay. What advice would any of y'all give these small mom-and-pop businesses?
Good question. It's one that we worry a lot about, because we are a community of small businesses, and we realize that if the revenue's not there, it's very difficult to pay the bills. I, again, would encourage you and everyone to look at the resources that are out there, from Workforce Solutions to the Small Business Development Office and the BRC. I would ask that you call Michael Looney and ask for the resources that he might give somebody to do. And I would hope that, as we said before, that at this point in time, that our community would be a community that extends integrity, intelligence, honesty, and kindness at this point in time, because getting a smaller amount of rent is better than no rent if a business has to shut down. It's a tough time for everybody, and not everybody has cash available, and we realize that revenue drives income, and if income is cut because revenue is cut, it's tough to pay the bills, and we realize families need to be fed. Families need to be able to put gas in their car and pay for insurance. So it's going to be a tough time, and we realize that. That's why we're asking for really tough measures right now. That's why we're asking for really tough measures right now, because the tougher we become today, the quicker we will deal with this virus and cut it off. If we don't honor these restrictions, then we will continue to see a climb in the virus, and we will not be able to live under a two-week restriction right now. I don't want this to become four weeks, or six weeks, or eight weeks. Let's get strong, let's be strong, let's live by these recommendations, and let's put this to bed.
And then another big industry that's going to be hit by this is hotels.
Yes, sir.
What does y'all stand on that?
They will be hit, it's certainly one of the things that other communities have looked at if we need additional beds. We certainly, for a fee, would work with our hotels and use them as a resource. It's one thing. Again, we want this to be as small of a timeframe as possible so we can get people back in our hotels, but there have been numerous conventions already canceling many, a lot of the facilities that were going to be used or not. So certainly, our hotel motel tax will be way down, we realize that. It's going to be a tough year financially for many, including the city. You know, we count on sales tax revenue, we count on property tax revenue. Obviously, property tax will not be hit, but our sales tax is going to be dramatically hit. We've planned very conservatively of a city, so we have some room right now. We planned the city down about 6.6% as of the end of February. We were, I'm not sure what percent up, but we're about $1 million over and above the plan, so we have some room there. So we don't have to impact fire, safety, police, et cetera, so we've got room there. But definitely, we're going to have to manage aggressively over the next few weeks and months.
And then my final question's actually for Dr. Deathloth. So you spoke earlier about the distribution of, sorry, excuse me, distribution of items like electronics, laptops, Chromebooks, stuff like that, and you're going to go for fully virtual. What are going to be for some of the kids that don't have Wi-Fi at home? Y'all have plans set up for that already?
Yes, in fact, earlier today, I was shown a map with the sites, the mobile sites already indicated for our Wi-Fi buses. So I would have to count them, but we have a map already created that has all the Wi-Fi buses and where they will be parked to allow greater access, and that's throughout the city of San Angelo.
Okay.
And then we are taking our devices that we've had an implementation of technology the last five years. So we're taking those devices, kind of reutilizing those and sending those out for students starting Monday, and possibly again even tomorrow if we can pull that off.
All right, thank y'all.
At the Chamber of Commerce and the Chamber of Commerce Economic Development Division and at the City of San Angelo Development Corporation, one of the things that we've done is we've been speaking with a lot of our corporations that are manufacturers and energy service companies. And they're doing a lot to prepare themselves for the squeeze and for the supply interruptions that are happening and are expected to happen. We hope they won't happen, but they're being planned for. One of the things that the local lenders that sit on our board and serve as advisors to the Chamber of Commerce have reminded us is, for all companies, talk to your lenders, communicate with them, email them, talk to them, let them know what's going on, let them know where you are in the process, let them know what plans you're making, what kind of capital needs you have. Lenders are, they're businesses too, and they want to make sure that they are well communicated with. So in a situation like this, which is uncharted territory, this is not a localized situation, this is a global situation, it's very important to maintain good, open communication so that lenders and corporations and employees aren't wondering what's going on. They know what's going on, they know that plans are being made. So again, I would stress, as was stressed to us, communicate with your lenders and with your suppliers, it's very important to do that.
Additional questions? What we might do, John, you want to come forward and talk about transit just one more time, because if somebody doesn't have transportation to get to the school to eat, what happens?
Yeah, so one of the programs that the school's implemented is a meals program from breakfast and lunch. We are able to continue to operate as normal at this time. We have seen a decline in ridership, and so we are ready and able and standing by. If you need a ride to one of those locations in order to pick up lunch, please call our dispatch. I don't have that number handy, but I will provide that to Brian so that we can have that up on the website and schedule the trip, and we'd be glad to get you there. The rules of that program, I believe, require that the child be with a parent, but we're happy to get you to and from.
Are there questions from the media?
For our representative from Shannon, we saw that, and you did explain a little bit in the city council meeting, with the mobile testing site. Just to confirm, was that just going to be for today and tomorrow? Do y'all have plans to extend that out further?
Great question. We're going to do testing, we start today, we're going to do testing tomorrow, we're looking at Monday to do screening and testing at this one site, and based upon demand and utilization, we might look to a secondary site. And I've already talked to Dr. May, he's been a great partner with us in terms of looking at a secondary site. Maybe we're looking at that parking lot that's across from the ASU Shannon Jackson Clinic. There's a large parking lot right across from that campus, and we're possibly going to look at a secondary site there. But we're working on plans for that. We're initially going to start with a downtown site and go from there. But we'll do testing today and tomorrow, and then look at screening and testing on Monday. And remember screenings, on screenings, you still have to have a provider order. So that's a physician or advanced practice professional.
Anybody else want to make a comment that's here today? No? And if there's no more questions from the media, thank you for being there, and thank you for getting the message out to the public about what we've chosen to do today, what Governor Abbott has asked us to do, and certainly whatever support you can give to us in getting this out would be grandly appreciated. So thank you for being here.